Well, welcome everybody to October 11th Select Board Meeting. Any agenda additions or deletions prior to getting started tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a short executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay. He making that a motion?
Motion, yes.
Okay. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion about an executive session? We'll put it prior to adjournment right after Select Board members' concerns. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other agenda additions or deletions tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes of September 27th, 2001.
Make a motion, we accept them as presented.
Okay, motion made to accept as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion or corrections to be offered?
I thought they looked good myself.
Okay. Hearing none then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minute pass. We'll dive right into the highway report tonight from the Road Commissioner.
Just an update, we are making a pass around town to, one pass around for the roadside morn. For the final of the season. Been grading roads, got a little downtime now with grader. We had a little problem with the grader. It's actually getting fixed as we speak. It'll take about a week. It's on about, hopefully in a week, week and a half, we'll be back finishing up. The east side of town is all done. And we started on the west side of town. So we got about, about five days of grading before we get done, or get the grader back. We just finished a small project on Mufford Road. Moving culverts and rock lighting ditch. And that's about all I have, unless somebody's got some other concerns.
Probably missed you when you just said it because I was looking at this, but how long did you figure the grader's gonna be down?
Uh, they said a week, but I'm planning on a week and a half. And that'll give us still enough.
Yeah, you still got time.
It wouldn't help, so.
Any questions or comments for the Road Commissioner tonight?
Keep up the good work, Cash.
Thank you.
Sticking with highway, uh, the discussion regarding the MRU speed zone limit. To cut that back to 25 miles an hour in the school zone. And I know we had proposed, um, lights as well to flash when the school is going into session and coming out. Uh, any discussion or Katie, do you have anything you want?
Um, so I reached out to the LCT to find out if there's a specific footage for a school zone. Um, they recommended like 200 feet prior to the school grounds. Um, but they also said that a traffic study is recommended or required. Um, so I read through that and it said that anyone can do the traffic study. So I put it in your packet, what it looks like. Um, so I guess maybe that's something me and Cash can do.
The only, the only, uh...
Count cars?
Try to cash, right? Might be a good day to do it.
I think the only issue you're gonna have on this thing is there is a spot for, um, getting the speeds of the vehicles.
Yeah, so that's another topic of discussion, I guess.
It's been a long time since I think we've done any of these.
Yeah.
I think I did my last one.
Well, I was gonna say, because for my, have we had the Sheriff's Department do one of them for us since they were contracted with us?
I was with, uh, what was her name? Sharon?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
I did one with, was it Sharon? Do you know what I'm thinking of? What the deputy that, uh, Sharon? He was with us for a while, years ago. Maybe you weren't there.
So here's the other question, can we?
We did, uh, when we changed the speed limit on East Timothay Road.
Are we able to just request, because we already have the Sheriff's Department patrolling 10 hours a week, right? So can we just request that it be in that area and log it for two different times?
I don't think I'd take, what, we gotta do 15 cars?
It's something like that. Cuz I agree with Katie, the rest of it looks like it's doable, doable by us. I mean, it's just the speed piece that is the issue.
If that's something that you guys want, the other alternative might be is, uh, I can speak with Lieutenant Gino about putting a speed cart right by the school, which him and I have already been speaking about. And that way, if...
Does that log the speeds as it?
Sometimes. Depends on how it's set up, but I'm not sure Lieutenant Gino would be able to speak better. I'm not sure how it does the speed or things like that. But if you were to have people out there, it's not a certified as far as to write a ticket off of.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. But something like this, it would work for.
So if it was set up approximately just south of the Sound Mill driveway, and we could actually sit in the Sound Mill driveway and count cars and write down speeds.
And watch the speeds as they go by.
That's true. That's good. That's true.
So I will, I will speak with both of those, with Lieutenant Bixby, and either him or I will...
Because honestly, I just sort of have the sheriff, he probably out on the road patrolling.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. That's why my suggestion was it would kill two birds with one stone if they just patrolled in that area. And still were issuing tickets potentially, but you know, just logging what they, it would take, what? At the right time of day, it'd take probably 15 minutes to hit 15 car, you know, get 15 speeds, I mean.
I can say in the last three, three to four weeks, we've done, I've done several directed patrols right in that area. And within those, and I believe they're in the Starz reports and everything as well, is all the speeds logged of every vehicle that went through during that time period. And those are half hour, 45 minute directed patrols around 2:30 to 3 o'clock timeframe, um, to catch that school traffic. So there are several cases that, within the last month, that have the speeds of all vehicles logged within.
So maybe we can just pull the data from there and be done? That's another idea.
I'm not sure what the requirements there are.
Yeah, that'd be a good, I mean...
I got other things to do.
Yeah, sorry.
So, um, I take it that once the study's done, then we can attack the ordinance?
Yeah, um, I do have the amendment drafted for when we can approve that, um...
But we have to do this first.
Yeah.
And then, um, you had a price on signs and lights, correct?
Um, I think so.
We're speaking with the former sheriff and he mentioned something about a grant. There are grants out there that we can get this thing with.
Do you have, like, do you know the name of it or where it would be found?
Uh, I did a few days ago.
Um, so I actually reached out to Brandon for, because they put up the Your Speed flashing light, uh, sign. And they paid about $5,000 for two.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the school zone signs. I thought you had prices for those already.
Like the one...
Signs and the lights, yeah.
Oh, those, those things.
You'd sent that to us.
Yeah, let me find that.
But if there's a grant for tho, you know, maybe there's a grant for those too?
Safety grant of some sort.
I try, I'd get a hold of Sheriff.
We'll take it on mass budget, it'll be okay.
They have two of the Your Speed signs that monitor the speed. They've gotten both of those through a grant.
Okay.
So I believe you can only do one at a time. They did them about three years apart.
Okay.
So she should have copies of grant work.
So West Rutland, Katie, who to reach out to then?
Um, also, the, um, we had offered $2,000 to the other town that was selling.
I saw the response that came through today that they were not interested in selling anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
So from Econo signs, they quoted $5,032.83 for two school flashing signs.
So I, I mean, I think I, we've got time because we gotta do the traffic study anyway. I think I'd pursue, in the next week, I'd pursue grants. And see what's out there.
And if there isn't out there, why shouldn't that, uh, truthfully come out of the school? But it's serving four towns, you know, it's students from four towns that go there. It's not just us.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest at least a split of some sort.
I'm thinking 25% reached out.
Well, however we wanna approach it, but let's see if there's grants first. If a grant will pay for it.
Fine, it'd be perfect.
It's taken care of. Okay, any other items with regards to that topic or anything else for highway? Okay, not hearing anything. Um, warrants are here. I know I, this stack is signed. I gotta still sign this stack. Um, but warrants are around. Anybody technically a guest tonight? Matt, you wanna be a guest?
Not really. Although you can give me the COVID money. I did, I did find a loophole in that. You can give the COVID money to a nonprofit in town, so. And I'll buy your signs for you, Cash. All, well, one hand watches the other, see, look at that.
Be two new fire trucks though.
All right, any public comments tonight? Okay, well, let's move on to the first of our big topics for tonight, and that is the Hazard Mitigation Plan and Further Discussion. I think as a update to the public, um, there was, um, feedback given to uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission regarding our proposed changes, which largely had to do with the removal of um, flood zone overlays. And, um, well, I think that really was the, the main thrust of what was, what the board was not interested in. Um, the feedback that came back from Regional is that they did not feel that we should do that. Um, and there was a comment made that they didn't think that we would be potentially approved by removing that. Um, and there were two specific comments that were made. Um, I'll read those. Um, so, actually, the second one's really what, um, the second one's really what applies here. With respect to the request to delete the Natural Systems Protection Mitigation Action, which is Table 6 of the plan, there is an issue with the action in its entirety or just parts of it, this is a question to us. Um, like the vegetative buffers and collaboration with, uh, the Rutland Natural Resources Conservation District, um, because the removal of the action seems to contradict the support for the, uh, restoring of the floodplain capacity and the shoots on Mill River. It would also seem to undermine that the town wants, what the town wants to do to address the deposition on the Middle Road Bridge over Cold River. Um, so we need to offer input, um, and address the conflict, um, about whether or not we should, um, do that. So, um, I know in my emails, I made my opinion very clear. So we'll see what the rest of the board thinks, because I know there seemed to be a little bit different.
Take part of that, I don't know.
Which pa, which one are you talking about?
The vegetation. Remember the vegetation around?
Correct, so...
She didn't include it on that page.
This isn't, I was gonna say, that's not this page.
Um, it's establishing vegetative buffers in riparian areas, stabilize stream banks, remove burms and/or accumulated debris to restore flood capacity.
Which, so when that came down through, I, and potentially maybe I was misunderstanding as well, but I didn't think we wanted that one totally removed. Uh, the one that we really talked about removing was, we wanted the storm water management out, totally. And we wanted the, um, the river corridor bylaws totally out. I, that was my take, which the, those are the two that are on this page, that we wanted those two completely gone.
Over here.
Was my...
That was pretty much my understanding at the last meeting, the same thing.
So, um, as far as the burms and that whole thing, I think we wanted to potentially reword it a little bit, but I don't think we were saying to take it totally out.
No.
So. I guess there just needs to be a consensus, that's all. I mean, I know that in order to move on from it.
I do have from my notes that you wanted to remove that whole mitigation action.
For the burms and the...
Yeah, because it mentioned flood capacity.
March.
Having gone through the Planning Commission and this, this, uh, storm water management and the river corridor, all the problems, you know, they got names and all that stuff, I say take it out too.
Those are the two that, I think, my consensus, and I guess we'll go around here, the two actions that she has on here, we want totally gone, correct? So you, you're in agreement with that? You're in agreement with that? So yeah, so, and I know Mike was too, at least last time I talked to him, for those two.
Yes.
So...
So they, they are removed from the plan, but that summary page will remain like that.
Why?
She said that was the most transparent way to show, like FEMA and the state.
No, they work for us. It goes away.
Well, I'm glad I clarified that.
Yeah, no.
That's our plan.
That's, that's her way of...
Showing that it was...
Showing that, well, they're meanies and they took this out. So...
So the summary page is going.
Yeah, no, there should, no, absolutely not. All that should, I mean, okay, I'm acting as chairman, so I can't, all right, I gotta remember my role tonight.
So if you read on her email, you read, the email that printed out...
This one.
Like the first paragraph says, "I'm gonna leave this summary page as a transparent way to show all the comments received" or something.
So I, as one person, would say what we're publishing to the public is the final product. And we've gone through the process. If they wanna go back and look at Peg TV and look at all of these records, have at it. But this is a way to, to again, sneak it, okay, well, it's not gonna be in the plan, but it's gonna be on the back page. So it's still, so it's still there, so it's, it's a way to have it. Look, see?
Out of sight, out of mind.
That doesn't fly with me.
Yeah.
So, I'm one person though.
No.
And I'm a second person.
No, as we discussed, take it out.
Yeah.
The whole thing. Yeah, no. Because you leave it there and maybe not right now, but somewhere in the future, it gives them a little fuck in the door that, uh,
Sure.
we don't need.
Um, so what about that, um, mitigation action about the floods?
So the floodplain, I don't have it in front of me. Is there a copy of it in here?
I have one.
Yeah, there is right here.
It's on page 25.
Mike's files. Glad somebody kept it. Page 25.
I have copies of the plan here too.
So... So vegetative buffers in riparian areas, stabilize the street, stream banks, remove the burms and/or accumulated debris.
So initially from our public hearing, I have that, you wanted that mitigation action taken out, and that's what was, like, controversial with the support of Alf's comments.
So what we had issue with, now that I'm reading through the whole thing, was that the project timeline was to assemble a Select Board-appointed committee to work with NRCD by October of 2022. And that's what we had an issue with.
Yeah.
And that's why that was...
So it's just working with the...
Yeah.
Well, because, so, again, I understand that supposedly all these things are recommendations and we're not bound by whatever to do all this, but I come from a world, if it's in writing, you're at least semi-bound to it. Whatever, and I realize that it's, it's hypotheticals and whatever, but once you put something in writing, It's there. It, it's there and it starts things in motion. So by putting in writing that by October of 22, which is literally 12 months from now, you're gonna establish a committee to work with NRCD on further doing these things. That was where we had the issue, because this, my memory's coming back, we had Nicole sitting here, and we said, what's the next steps? Like, is this committee gonna go start knocking on people's doors and saying, "Hey, you need a buffer zone out in your backyard." Or, "Hey, you, you've got a stream running over there that, you know, the cows are a little too close to," or, or whatever. I mean, I think that it opens up. And I, and now that I think about it, I think that's why we settled on initially wanting to get rid of it. Unless you wanna tone the language down. I mean, we're certainly not disagreeing with the ideas that are there. But I think we're disagreeing on development and who really is gonna have authority.
And I think based on her email, like, she said it's fine if you wanna change the language of who you're gonna work with or leave that out.
I mean, we also know what it was, what it was like when we had the Army Corps and those groups to work with after Irene. It was never an easy process.
No, but, uh, that was something, that's a rarity. I'm not gonna tell you it couldn't happen again.
Oh, I know.
That's a rarity.
Sure.
And, uh, I really hate to put us into a position where they're gonna come in and tell us, especially the individual property owners, what they've gotta do and can't do with their own properties.
They're gonna tell you anyways.
Sure.
What was that, Cash?
They're gonna tell you anyways what they are gonna do and not do and not do nothing.
Yeah.
So I guess what are the, oh, Mark, sorry.
The thing, the thing is, you didn't go to the Planning Commission meeting, but they brought somebody down from the state on that, removing the burms. She knew nothing about what was going on. She had no permits. She had nothing. And she asked the Select Board to give the conditional permit or whatever she needed. And you're, this is our mitigation plan. This isn't Rutland Regional. So I say take the whole comp, thickened thing out.
Cash, your wheels are turning. What are you thinking? Uh, so for me, for me, I think, just to lay my cards out, I think my biggest issue is that timeline and that.
Yeah, that, uh...
That's, that to me is... Well, the October of 22, but again, like, if you're gonna establish this commit, okay, what, what role are they playing? Like, I mean, whenever we roll out committees, think of, you know, other places that I'm involved in. If we roll out a committee, it has a very specific purpose. It's designed to do something. This is really vague, and it's vague on purpose. I mean, don't, don't overlook that fact. It's vague on purpose, because you can roll this committee out and then, okay, well, what real guidelines are on the committee? What, especially when you get a government agency, whether it's state level or national level, what, what role are they playing? What are you, what are you handing over to their ballpark to, you know, and again, um, when we tend to have these discussions, what they ultimately boil down to is local versus bigger control. That's what, that's what it boils down to when we have these discussions. So...
Yeah, and my personal feeling, I wanna see everything local, just as much as possible.
I mean, you could totally, you could just, you could wipe that part and say, just wipe the project timeline. And you could say, "The Select Board will address these issues as it becomes necessary." And, and then, and then you, then you, then you've made it vague in the opposite direction, because
Not in their favor.
It, it, it shifts the power. It shifts who's gonna be responsible for it.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, that's...
That sounds pretty good, actually.
Now you know why you're sitting in the middle tonight.
I think that would be the better solution, like the, leaving it kind of vague. Because otherwise, we have to come up with, like, why we needed the deposition underneath the Middle Road Bridge. And then the flood shoots that Alf was talking about.
Well, and, and sure, and those are things that we've, i- if we, if we just state that it's gonna be kind of Select Board-directed, those are things we've been arguing for, for a number of years now. You know, it's been multiple years that we've been harping on them. So, I, and, and then again, it, it stays in there. It, it shows that it is something that we see that we're, that we're willing to recognize.
At our...
But it's gonna be at our
Leisure.
On our terms.
And you wanna include the, um, Rutland NRCD or remove them?
That's up to everybody else. I've already stated my opinion.
The worse it is.
I mean, you already have a list of partnerships above there, as it is. I mean, you've got the Army Corps on there, you've got A&R on there, you've got, I mean, you've got several agencies that scare the dickens out of me already, so...
And in the description, it mentions that as well, so take that out too.
Where are you looking? Oh, up top.
Yeah.
Well, it references the, the berm removal project and the NRCD, which they are.
Right, but it says Clarendon will work with the Rutland NRCD to identify areas for future collaboration.
So you can just change it, say Clarendon will work, uh, on the local level.
Okay. Everyone good with that?
And then, I mean, then it stays.
So you'll keep the mitigation action, but remove working with Rutland NRCD and then change the project timeline to be more vague.
And I wouldn't put a date on it. I would just simply say that Clarendon, the Select Board will work at the Select Board's discretion.
Right.
I think you gotta have a date on it, but I'm not sure.
If that's, if that's the case, they can add right to the end of it that it's ongoing, because we've been doing it for...
All of them needed dates, I thought. I thought all of them needed a date on there, Cash, didn't they?
Um, one of them says, "Project timeline as needed."
There you go.
So...
As needed then.
There you go.
We'll see what we can do with that.
What I would say, and I've said it over and over again, is just the reminder, it is our plan. And there's nothing wrong with taking a stance on how, I mean, ultimately, it comes down to the five here, but taking a stance on how we want to see it worded. There's nothing wrong with that at all. And, and we're getting now, I don't wanna call it threats, but we're getting similar comments to what we got on the last one, where, "Well, you're not gonna get approved," or, "You're not gonna get this, you're not gonna get that." And on that one, we stood our ground and said, "Nope, that's not gonna be in there," and it came back approved.
We got approved.
FEMA approved it. So, you know, the, the, the comments that come down, I'm much more one to say, "Okay, we'll throw it in, let's see what comes back."
Exactly.
I'm, I, you know, that's, there's nothing wrong with letting it go in, and if they come back and say, "Well, we want you to revise these," then we've got a decision to make.
We can revise them and change the language the way we want it to.
And the, and then it, whatever. So, so, okay, so to wrap up this discussion then, um, do you need any more input on changing of the language? Do you wanna read us what you have for notes on that one?
Um, so basically what I'm gonna tell Stephanie, based on what you guys told me, is, um, remove the summary page of the comments. Um, keep the mitigation action, but remove working with the Rutland, uh, uh, NRCD and, um, change the project timeline to an as-needed basis.
Yeah, and specifically that those are gonna be on local level. That's gotta be in there, that it's, so we're removing it and that it's gonna be worked out on the local level. I would also recommend that maybe before you send it to her, you compile your comments and just do a lap around the board before you actually send them off to her. Any other things that needed to be addressed in this before we are done? I didn't really read the summary page yet.
I think, um, she'll make another draft of the plan, and then the next board meeting, you'll have to sign off on that one.
Yep. Yeah, because, I mean, the other flip side of this is if this plan was to be submitted with this attached to it, it gives the, that's what is gonna cause it to get kicked back.
On this page twenty-six, you do see where, um, the third dot down says the select board will, um, work with the Rutland Natural Resource.
An S D S.
No, wait, 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 I'm thinking
Yeah, no, you're right, it is.
So maybe you ought to take that out. This is the process for incorporating the plan requirements. You better go through those and make sure you have it where you want it.
So that's mentioned in the email as well, that, that mitigation action and that bullet point coincides.
Okay, correct.
So.
Cause we had already commented on that.
If taking, just taking the Rutland NRCD out, again, and just saying the Clarendon Select Board.
You could put whatever you're gonna put.
Yeah, I think, I think we just, uh, 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 edit it to coincide with what we just did on twenty-five. So basically, in my opinion, it would be the select board will work on the local level, to identify opportunities, and, I mean, I think that that leaves it open, and it doesn't tie us to another organization. I mean, let's face it, if there's grants out there, or if there's opportunities for funding to do certain things, nine times out of ten, that's gonna be who we're gonna have to go with anyway. But it doesn't have to, in other words, it doesn't have to be
Right now.
tied in.
Right.
You know?
You don't want to be limited to one organization.
And just because they doesn't, they don't appear there, doesn't mean that they're not gonna work with us.
Yeah.
I mean. Anything else before we move on? Okay, well, um, I don't know if we necessarily need a motion right now, because we're not approving anything. Um, but I think, so the request, uh, does everybody want to see what Katie edits before it goes in?
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So Katie will look for an email from you before, and then you can get the, uh, basically that it captures what we're thinking, and then you can send it to her?
Yes.
Any other hazard mitigation plan comments or questions? Okay. New business, animal control ordinance. And go for it.
I, Mike asked me to be here in case there was any questions from the board. Essentially, the obvious, a number of you are aware, we've been having some issues lately with some, uh, animal owners, horses, things like that. The current Clarendon Animal Control really only references canine and wolf-dog hybrids. It limits our ability to take any enforcement action or really be able to do anything beyond saying, trying to mediate a situation or saying, go to small claims court. I did present him with a couple of sample, uh, ordinances. I'm not sure if he got those around to you. A couple of different options, I believe I gave him Hubbardin and Proctors. As some samples that are enforceable, but some different variety. Hubbardin's is enforceable. In my personal opinion, it is still a little vague. But I provided kind of both ends of the spectrum to try and limit regulation as opposed to make it the most effective and enforceable as clear as possible. Hubbardin's is enforceable, takes a little bit more work to put together, but it can be enforceable through some of those things. Uh, but I could also see some loopholes where that might still be an issue. The definitions that are provided within Proctors are very clear upfront, and that makes for a very easy enforcement action. You know, so beyond that, it's really what the board prefers and, you know, just kind of some samples on what.
So, so the current challenge is, I guess, just to make sure the public is up to speed, is that we've had in particular equine issues in one part, in one part of town that, um, are repeatedly traveling. Let's put it that way. I guess that's the easiest way. And my understanding is after multiple conversations and multiple attempts, there really has not been much of an improvement to the situation, to put it as politely as possible. So, um, the, the question has become, do we want to begin the process of giving our animal control ordinance some more teeth? So that an issue like this can be addressed in, in the circumstance that it is. I mean, I mean, multiple of us on the board have farm backgrounds, and animals do get out, but at the same time, you work to remedy the problem and keep them where they belong. So, that's the way it works. That's part of your job as an owner.
I like the definition, Proctor, of the domestic animal. Much better that, I mean, it's nothing here Hubbardin, and I'm sure ours is like that.
The, as far as Hubbardins, it, it essentially refers back to the commissioner, and then it's essentially the line of in whatever, you know, definition essentially is deemed by the select board or whatever. So if we have an issue like this, I could put a case together, bring it to the select board. The select board could say, yes, we feel this meets it under this requirement. And
Proctors obviously doesn't require that, because it already lists the animal as, as being
Very defined, very clear, very easy to enforce. You know, like I said, obviously, you know, different towns in Vermont, there's a lot of discretionary on where they want to go between some of that clarity, or some people feeling that there's overregulation. So that's kind of why I gave him that variation. Like I said, the one from Hubbardin is enforceable. It does take a little more work, a little bit more time to put into it to be able to get there on some cases. Whereas Proctors is very clear cut. And it's very simple to, uh, to follow through and enforce that.
I like simple.
The, I mean, the other thing, too, is that I would assume Proctor, any final decision comes before the select board, like it was with that canine anyway, right? I mean, that would, would it fall into that?
Generally, not as far as issuing a ticket.
Not issuing a ticket, but I mean, if it was to go the route of having to have a further conversation.
Correct. Any, any action as far as removal of an animal in any method, or a nuisance or vicious animal, would have to go through the board.
Okay.
You know, if it's just, you know, like this situation here, honestly, it's causing property damage to some of the neighbors, tearing up the yards. There have been some safety concerns that it's down by the ball field, might get out in the road at night, not be seen, and somebody hit it with a car. So there have been some concerns along those lines. At that point, I'd just issue the ticket, issue the tickets, and if it got to a point where multiple tickets are issued, you know, that would, I would make sure the board is aware of the problem, but it would be up to the board to decide if they want to do anything further, or just have me continue to issue tickets as they go forward.
I think, uh, something should, could be done to escalate the ticket as it goes.
It's, it's currently in yours as it is. Um, first offense is, I believe it's a fifty-dollar penalty with waiver being half. Second, I believe is a hundred. Third, I believe is two hundred.
I was gonna say, I thought it escalated.
Uh, waiver penalty is half of, if they just want to pay it, if they want to have a hearing in front of the board or whatever, then it goes up to that maximum fine. Or, excuse me, not the board, in front of the judicial bureau, and that would be up to the judge on what they would choose to, uh,
And, and should be added restoration for the damage.
That generally does, that still, restoration usually still has to go through small claims.
You know my opinion about small claims.
I know your opinion. I can only state where, um, you know, as far as that goes, but at least there's some immediate incentive that, on my end, that I could give to prevent future incidents going forward.
Sure. All right. Well, I think we've had, you got two good examples in front of you. We've certainly got a picture of the, of what's going on. I know one of the property owners that has experience is here. I don't know if you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I'm not generally an advocate of adding more regulation, but we have a situation with a property owner, a horse owner, who either is incapable of keeping horses on her own property or doesn't care. And regardless, uh, is one of the recipients of these, uh, equine visits all over my property, and, you know, it, it just keeps repeating. You know, uh, you know, I don't want it to end.
Um, so obviously, the process of changing an ordinance or adding in addition to ordinance, um, requires a process, and certainly the board can vote to do that tonight if it so wishes.
I would make that motion.
Which one are you recommending?
I recommend a Proctor definition on domestic animals, for sure.
Okay. So Rick is motioning to begin the process of adding Proctors Article Two, Section One to our animal ordinance.
Just started, just that word. Well, that's just
That's the one that applies, yeah.
Okay.
So adding the domestic animal.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And seconded by Rick, uh, by Cash?
Do we want to look at the leash or anything, or we already set with that?
We already have a leash law.
We got that, that's been pretty good.
The, the issue with our ordinance is it doesn't address anything other than really canines and
Dogs and hyenas.
So this will add other animals. So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion or comments?
I was just thinking, um, does ours, ours mentioned a cat?
Yours does cover dog, cat, and ferret.
Okay. I haven't looked at it in a long time.
I didn't know, I didn't know it covered ferrets, so that's new. Okay. Any more discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the record, it's unanimous for who's here. To add that.
Hopefully that will help.
Okay. Town officers report. Treasurer?
So, of course, um, this is the last week of tax collection for us. The tax due date is Saturday, the sixteenth. I will be here for the rest of the week, including Friday and Saturday, um, from ten to four. We are currently about sixty percent collected, so it looks to be a pretty busy week. Um, we do accept postmarks, so if you're unable to make it into the office, as long as it's postmarked, um, by the sixteenth, uh, then those payments will be safe from going delinquent. As always, if anyone has any questions, you can certainly reach out. Um, I'm happy to help.
Since we do have a lister here, is there any listing update you want to offer, or anything going on that we should know?
No, it's fairly quiet. I mean, property has been selling rapidly in that, very high crisis compared to what the appraisals were two years ago, but that's kind of across the board, so you know, everyone's in, you know, the same boat. But, you know, otherwise, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary happening.
Katie, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Um, I guess I would just report that the road crew finished the East Street and East Timothay Road Grants and Aid Project, so, um, Stephanie will be coming out this week to check it over, and then we'll be working on the reimbursement for Grants and Aid Project.
Uh, select board members concerned. Cash?
What's up for tonight? There is one, sorry. There's one thing I would like to send out. Um, one of my employees, his wife got seriously hurt last night. And there are thoughts and prayers to them.
Absolutely. Bob, do you have anything?
No, I'm set for tonight.
As the, uh, chairman is ill tonight, we'll wish him the best as well, and a speedy recovery as well.
And his kid.
And his son. Yep, absolutely. And
I'm good.
Okay. With that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. And we should also clarify that it is a personnel matter that we're going into executive session for.